Oh, Ben is in here.
Oh, we're ready.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me on Zoom? Maybe a thumbs up. I see nodding. All right. Well, this is Katie Katsman and it's Wednesday, May 11th, 2022 at 7:15 and I open the committee of the whole and we'll start with the roll call. Obie? Ellis?
Yes.
Brantley?
Yes.
Jaken? Katsman?
Here.
Lawrence? Mackey? Morrison?
Here.
Gortini?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Shay?
Here.
Tonight, we do have a guest speaker joining us from Zoom. We have Cheryl Haywood, who's the executive director of the Timberland Regional Library System. Good evening, Cheryl. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you great.
So this is the first time I've ever done it from a hotel room. I'm in Long Beach, Pacific County, because I'm giving a presentation tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM to the Pacific, to the Ocean Park Chamber of Commerce. So thank you for having me in my hotel room. So good evening, council members. Thank you for this opportunity to provide to you the 2021 State of Timberland Regional Library and several 2022 exciting projects. Your trustee for Grace Harbor is Jasmine Dickoff on the Board of Trustees. You should have received the link to the 2021 Annual Report and I encourage you to take a look at it because it outlines additional program services and stories during 2021. Throughout that, throughout last year, our libraries continue to be anchor institutions, playing an essential role in the communities we serve. So here are the 2021 highlights, which are based on the 2020 to 2024 Strategic Direction, focusing on local communities and increasing the library's presence in underserved communities, partnering with agencies to support diverse communities and empowering children from birth to five. So for empowering children from birth to five, we did a major reclassification of 13,000 picture books across 29 libraries and we divided the books into 14 general themes so that toddlers and preschoolers and their caregivers and parents can find new reading adventures more easily. We purchased something called VOX Books for Children, and that's V-O-X. VOX Books are talking picture books in English and in Spanish to listen and read along to that do not require a computer or tablet or phone. We also purchased Playaways, preloaded audiobooks for all ages. Again, no need for a computer or tablet or phone. And we also purchased Playaway Launchpads that have content focusing on STEM and reading for birth to five. We added multiple online new digital resources for people of all ages on so many different topics. I'm just going to mention two tonight. One is called ABC Mouse, which is early learning for ages two through eight, is for reading, math, and science. And we've been providing that service in our libraries for many years and now we're providing it outside the library. And then we are also subscribing to an online resource called Press Reader. And Press Reader gives you access with your Timberland card to over 7,000 world newspapers and magazines from content from over 120 countries in 60 different languages. We upgraded our Wi-Fi infrastructure for the first time in five years last year. We also opened up two what we call Lucky Day Demonstration Libraries. And Lucky Day means that these are bestselling items for all ages, demonstration showing the public that it's needed. One is at Capitol Mall in West Olympia that opened June 1st of last year with a two-year lease. And the 29th Library is called Hawks Prairie Timberland Library in Lacey at 8205 Martin Way. And of course, your library card in Aberdeen, you can use it at all the locations, at all 29 locations. During the pandemic, we worked with counties and cities and the US Forest Service and ports and hospitals and all sorts of entities to install story trails throughout the five county region. So we serve, as you know, Grace Harbor, Pacific, Mason, Thurston, and Lewis Counties. And so there's many, many story trails. And we are currently updating the list on our website. So you just need to go to trl.org to find out the latest list. And of course, all the libraries continue as connection sites in the work source system across the five county region. And I myself have been personally appointed by the county commissioners and the consortium that oversees Pack Mountain. And I'm serving my second three-year term. And as a board member, I oversee the One-Stop Committee that oversees work source in the five county region. So now for some statistics, in Aberdeen, last year, we had 7,207 active library patrons. They checked out 27,071 items, physical items, and then downloaded from Overdrive, our ebook, e-audiobook, and e-magazine platform, 13,888 titles. Now for some 2022 initiatives. We increased our open hours in Grace Harbor from 282 staffed hours to 298 hours beginning January 1. In Aberdeen, it jumped from 49 to 54 hours per week, making it a clean nine to six, Monday through Saturday, very easy for people to remember. We resumed our expanded access hours at McClery earlier this year. This was a pilot we began in 2019. For those of us who are 18 and over, we can go to our local library, get a key card and access the library at McClery from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM daily. This was a request from our public every time we go out and ask for, you know, put out a survey. People are always interested in accessing the library early evening, early mornings or evenings and Sundays. And NACEL Timberland Library opened up for the same service in Pacific County on April 18. And next Monday, Hootsport in Mason County will open up. And so once you get your card, if you get it at the Aberdeen Library, you can use it at any of these libraries and they're all with the same hour, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week. Wanted to mention too, that we have been in a great partnership with a nonprofit called West Care. They first approached us as their first place in Washington State. They work with veterans and at-risk youth. They wanted to open up a Veterans Connection Cafe in East Lewis County, which we did in 2019, or 18. And this is an opportunity for veterans to gain access to pensions and disability awards and healthcare benefits. And as of last year, by the end of last year, it exceeded $1 million in terms of benefits. We have since opened up a second location at the Westport Timberland Library, which began January 11th of this year. And again, for veterans living in the city of Aberdeen, they can go to the Aberdeen Library and we can connect them to the services at either Westport or in Randall. Now for some updates about the Aberdeen Timberland Library. You may have heard that Stephanie Reese, the library manager, accepted a next level up position. She's now supervising library managers in three counties. So we are now doing a national recruitment for her position and we are about to enter into the first round of Zoom interviews. There will be a second round with in-person at the Aberdeen Timberland Library for the public to meet the candidates, the finalists, and that is to be determined. Wanted to add that we did add a security guard in February of 2022 to assist with staff and patron safety. We added a mobile services specialist to the team at Aberdeen with the goal of bringing a mobile library to locations around Aberdeen and rural Grace Harbor. Wanted you to know that the Aberdeen staff partnered with the Friends of the Aberdeen Library to give out over 2,000 free books for downtown Aberdeen's Winter Fest and the library's winter book bingo programs. And the staff provided over 5,000 Take and Make Activity Kits to kids during last summer, Summer Library in the Parks Program. And free books and Take and Make Activity Kits are available to give out and accept at the Aberdeen Sunday Market. As you know, we've been working steadily on a remodel, on a major remodel of the Aberdeen Timberland Library. We're very excited about it. And now, of course, it's on an unofficial pause as we continue to refine the RFP with Lisa and also work towards hiring the new library manager for Aberdeen. You may know too, that the Aberdeen Library has the honor of requesting funds from the Marion J. Weatherwax Endowment Fund, held by Laird Norton Wealth Management of Seattle, which means that last year we requested and we were awarded $7,200 towards the purchase of 66 additional launchpads specifically for the Aberdeen Library, which are very, very, I mean, they're checked out, they're incredibly popular. Upcoming staff have a fun summer plan for our communities in Aberdeen. We continue a partnership with the city of Aberdeen, with the Aberdeen School District Five and the Grace Harbor YMCA to provide the 12th Annual Library in the Parks. Offerings this year will include Take and Make Kits and a small craft and the Pioneer Finch Peterson and North End Parks from 11:00 to 1:00. More information is coming. I would like to share a quote as I end this brief presentation that paints the picture of what Timberland Regional Library has provided to people, especially in the past two years. "A library in the middle of a community is a cross between an emergency exit, a life raft, and a festival. They are cathedrals of the mind, hospitals of the soul, theme parks of the imagination. On a cold rainy island, they are the only sheltered public spaces where you are not a consumer but a citizen instead." Thank you again for this opportunity and do you have any questions?
Thank you, Cheryl. I think you summed it up perfectly there at the end. Any questions from council members? Councilperson Alice?
Hi. Thank you. Cheryl, thank you for joining us. And the library is certainly such an incredible part of our community and a resource for so many things and a wonderful place just to hang out. When do you anticipate going out to bid or starting work on the renovations?
Well, I know that there's additional design work, that more refined design work that needs to be done to the plans. You can see the latest plans at trl.org under Locations and pick Aberdeen and you can see all the planning that's there, including a three-dimensional overview of the building. We need to work with Lisa. We understand that there's a lot of infrastructure work going on in the city right now and Lisa's a very busy person. So, you know, we would like to have the library manager obviously selected and hired and continue that process. I really don't have a date. I mean, we want to get it done as soon as possible. But it depends upon Lisa's work, Lisa Scott's work, and us hiring a new manager. But I'm hoping like by the fall that we can continue the process.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions from council members? Seeing none. Cheryl, thank you so much for joining us and providing us with an update and safe travels.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Chief Shoemate has the honor of giving a lifesaving award tonight.
Put you on the spot. Well, thank you, President Katsman, Mayor Shay, City Council, fellow department head, citizens. And as you can see, a number of our folks from Aberdeen and Hope from here. There we are. Okay, he better not miss. For those who don't know, that's Brandy's husband. Anyway, I have with me today Brandy Slater. She is our narcotics K-9 handler. And I got it very exciting. I won't go into details because I'm sure I can't other than I got this really cool picture this morning of Officer Slater in K-90 and a very substantial amount of illegal drugs. Brandy was instrumental in a search assisting drug task force. And it was pretty awesome. So that's just, she's just getting started. I'm pretty confident of that. So, nice job. So anyway, I certainly appreciate the opportunity to discuss briefly and present Brandy a lifesaving award. The situation happened, I'll get into some details back in January. But the information was later brought to me by both Sergeant Chris Raffin, who is here today, as well as Officer David Terrence. I don't care if David is here or not, but I certainly appreciate them bringing this to my attention. But because of Brandy's training schedule, she spent many, many hours at the K-9 Training Program that we waited until now to give this presentation. So anyway, the case that involves this particular award occurred on January 13th of this year at about 4:20 in the morning. Police and fire were both dispatched to a residential structure fire. It was initially reported to be in the 600 block, or 600 block of West Market Street. But as is often the case, we will go there and it's, the situation is not there to be found. So Officer Slater and Officer Terrence had both responded to that area, didn't locate it, so started searching the area. And then shortly thereafter, Officer Slater located the fire out of residence in the 600 block of West First Street. And then advised Officer Terrence, as well as the responding fire department units. Officer Slater found the residence, went into the residence that was, there were no lights. Interior was filled with smoke. She was unable to see and really struggled to breathe. She exited the residence. I'm picturing in my mind, took a couple of big deep breaths, but then went back into the residence. And upon reentering that second time, she was able to locate which I believe was the calling party, but also a larger disabled older gentleman. And so through Brandy's actions, she was able to assist both individuals out of that structured fire. And so we are very confident that Brandy's actions saved lives that early morning in January. So I personally want to thank Officer Slater for her efforts and Officer Terrence and Sergeant Raffin again for bringing this to my attention and making the recommendation of the lifesaving award. And so for her efforts and actions, Officer Slater is being honored tonight with the lifesaving award. And so what comes with that is a mitered plaque that, we'll call it a plaque. But it's Aberdeen Police Department to certify that Officer Brandy Slater is hereby awarded this lifesaving award in recognition of her lifesaving efforts that occurred on January 13th, 2022, while assisting a disabled resident from a burning house fire. Hurt actions and extraordinary efforts during this response most likely saved the life of an Aberdeen resident. If you please give a round of applause. In addition to that, we also have a work item that we have four hard lifesaving recipients. And it is a medal. And these are very cool and they're not given out too terribly often. And so I'll show this first to everybody. It's very cool. It says lifesaving on the top. But it is a very impressive medal or badge. And so that's what that looks like.
Wow.
Should everybody feel like to see that? But we're just very thankful for her actions. As I often do, I don't want to throw my folks under the bus if they don't want it. So I will pass on for Officer Slater her appreciation. I know she would tell us that she's just doing her job, but obviously she went above and beyond the call of duty. And so thank you for doing what you do. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Wonderful to have events like this to honor our police department. And I'd just like to recognize all our police officers that are here tonight. Thank you, everybody, for your job.
Right. It's always the best part of the job, isn't it? Okay. Next, we have more department head updates. Are there any department heads that have updates to share tonight? Director Barnum, hi.
Hello, Council President Kochman. Thank you. I will share my screen. Okay, on the agenda tonight, I have a couple requests for an ordinance amendment to the Aberdeen Park Code that are coming from the Aberdeen Park Board. One would extend the boundaries to make more people eligible to serve on the park board. Currently, it's the boundaries of the city limits of Aberdeen. We're requesting that the ordinance be amended so that residents who reside within the boundaries of the Aberdeen School District are eligible to serve on the park board. As you may know, the Aberdeen Parks Department is the only parks department in the county. So we do serve a pretty wide area that includes Cosmopolis, the Wishka area, out the Nishka area, and out toward Central Park. So I think this would increase the number of people, it would increase the number of people that are eligible to serve on the park board. I think it would be a good thing for Aberdeen and for our park board. So I hope that you approve this request to amend that section of the park code. The other section that we're requesting be amended is to add, ooh, I copied and pasted that wrong, is to add that individuals cannot lock, obstruct, or block park facilities. We had a citizen in Aberdeen that continually put their own personal locks on the gates to access the tennis courts. And in our park code, we, there is no remedy for that if somebody does lock our gates to any of our facilities. So unfortunately, we're requesting to add that individuals cannot do that. Projects in process, as a reminder, Wednesday of next week at 6:30 is the Capital Facilities Plan Workshop, which Brock Project Management, who is the consultant hired to put together the Capital Facilities Plan, will be there to go over the plan with all of you. If you did not receive the plan, or at least access to the plan, because it's a pretty large document, I put it in the Google Drive, please let me know. And I will send you the email link again, because I want to make sure everybody has that before next week. In all the rain that we had the last few weeks, when I was in the new building at 118 West, not here, and man, I got a lot of typos on this, 118 West Wishka Street, which will be used for museum purposes. I discovered a couple leaks. There was one over the third floor breaker box, so we shut the power down. And then the windows on the third floor were also leaking. We had John Lupo Construction come over and they were able to seal up the leak above the breaker box. But he did write up a report for me regarding the windows. The windows that were there are the lower quality framed window that are single hung and they were retrofitted into those original openings. So there are some, there is a short-term fix that he can do, but long-term, we're going to want to consider replacing those windows. Grant applications, I submitted the grant application to the Washington State RCO for the repairs to the foundation and fencing at the San Ben Park Tennis Courts. The city's match requirement is only 10%, which I can write grants for. We can use in-kind labor or we could do part of it with city cash or a combination of all three. The Capital Harringtons Grant, first deadline passed. I had a few corrections to make. I submitted that today and they let me know that I am now on to step two. So all my corrections were accepted. The next deadline is June 9. Here's a few photos of what's happening at the San Ben Park Tennis Courts. You can see the cracks and the surfacing. We've had the courts resurfaced twice by two different companies over the last 10 years. And each time that they were resurfaced, we had this issue with the cracking. And so I had a geotech take a look at it and I also met with the engineering department, the city's engineering department, and met with Brumfield Construction on site. And we determined that the foundation is what needs to be repaired. So submitted a grant for that for about $300,000. What's happening in the parks? We will be closing the large dog park side of the dog park at Garley Park for maintenance. It'll be closed starting next Monday for a month. The good thing is the dog park gets used a lot. And so then the bad news is over the winter, a lot of the turf got tore up and now it's pretty muddy. So we're going to plant new grass and we'll reopen that up the end of June. But we will have the small dog park side will still be open. Our slow pitch season begins next Monday, the 16th. We, for the first time in I think six years, have a women's league again. So we'll have five women's teams this year and 17 men's teams. So it's good to see that program growing. And then the hanging flower baskets will go up next week. We planted all the flowers last week in the ground pots. So now we just need the sun to come out for more than one day in a row. And then I want to thank the Aberdeen Rotary Club. They did a volunteer cleanup on Earth Day and they planted some new landscaping around the Rodo Log Pavilion. So I want to thank all the volunteers that came out for that. It looks really nice. It was much needed and very much appreciated. And lastly, I wanted to thank Windermere of Grace Harbor. They contacted me to let me know that the city received a grant for the Little League Field Remodel Project. So I'll be attending their office meeting tomorrow to accept the grant award that we receive. And that is it. Unless anyone has any questions.
Questions for the director? He always gives such good thorough updates with photos. We appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other updates from department heads tonight? All right, seeing none. I will hand it over to the mayor.
Thank you. Just a couple of brief things. One, on June 1st is the end of the regulations for, that we've been applying because of COVID. And so I'd like to get all the council meetings and committee meetings and so on back live. Everybody be here. Then other than that, I wanted to mention that a long, a project that's been long overdue and we've been working towards is the sidewalks in front of City Hall. We're going to get started on that here in a couple of weeks. We've already done, you might have seen some of the paint markings out there on the sidewalk where our engineering teams have been out there prepping. So we're going to get that beat-up sidewalk replaced here very shortly. And that's all I've got tonight.
Thanks, Mayor Shay.
Thank you.
How about non-standing committee reports? Are there any updates from my fellow council members about what they've been doing out in the community since we last met? Councilperson Ross?
Thank you. I attended the museum board meeting on May 1st and later in the agenda this evening, we'll be asked to approve some new acquisitions that we'll introduce to the museum. And also I'd like to report that the volunteer work on the current items is going very well and they have posted some pictures on their Facebook page if you're interested. So that's it. Thank you.
Other council members? Keep having to turn around to make sure everybody's raising their hands. Councilperson Shaw?
So this isn't really a committee report, but it's, the mayor mentioned that he would like to get back to being all in-person. But how does the, how do we decide as a council how we feel about that? Because, you know, what's going away is the requirement that we have a remote option. But nothing says we can't continue to still offer it to those council members who may have, you know, be vulnerable or need to be, you know, isolated and if we still have to, how do we, how do we want to deal with that? I mean, I don't think, I personally feel we're not totally out of the clear, out of the danger zone yet, if you will, and that we should continue to have a remote option for council members, even though it's no longer. and that we should continue to have a remote option for council members, even though it's no longer required.
Do we want to maybe put a pin in this and tell council comment?
Well, that's what I was asking, is how do we respond to the mayor saying that he would like to go back to being all in person? How do we, as a council, respond to that?
Let's talk about it during council comment.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll bring it up again then, thanks. Other updates? I will share an update. The homeless committee has been meeting, I believe we've met three times in the past few weeks, and have been getting some really good input from our partners. We met with our mental health navigator Lena Moore, and Deputy Chief Sutton was on the Zoom that we were on. And one of the things that the committee would really like to see is invite a couple people from the community. So we're seeking a member at large and a downtown Aberdeen business owner to join the committee for the purposes of providing input and recommendations. So anyone that's interested should submit a letter of interest to mayorshave@abertinewa.gov by Friday, May 27th at 5:00 PM to be considered for appointment by the committee. I understand that there are a few people that are interested, and I believe we had let those people know that they can send those to you as well. So if anybody has anything that's already been sent across, council members, please forward it to the mayor.
Can you repeat that?
Yes, anyone that is, the email address?
Yes.
The email address is mayor@abertinewa.gov. Thank you. Any other non-standing committee reports? Anything to add? All right, I will hand it back over to Mayor Shave again for the council meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is Mayor Shave, it's Wednesday, May 11th, 2022, at 7:45 PM. And I'd like to call the Aberdeen City Council Meeting to order. We begin with a roll call, please.
Obi? Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Here.
Gaken? Catchman?
Here.
Lawrence? Mackey? Morrison?
Here.
Ferratini?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Shave?
Here.
Mayor Shave?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse council members Obi, Mackey, and Lawrence.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion was made, seconded to excuse council members Obi, Cat, who else?
Mackey.
Mackey and Lawrence. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Next item on the agenda is the flag salute. And Lieutenant Chastain, would you lead us in the flag salute?
That'll be his last one?
I think it's to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every justice.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the previous minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Thank you. Motion was made, seconded to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public comments for agenda items. Come up to the podium, and you have three minutes. Anything on the agenda that you want to comment on?
Yes.
Please give us your name and if you know your ward.
Neil Anderson, downtown Aberdeen.
Okay.
Of course, as most people know me, I have some trouble with my business in downtown Aberdeen. And I came tonight to see what things that could be addressed. A lot of the mentally ill and the drug, I have witnessed many, many times where they're shooting up in the doorway. So it's almost impossible to get customers to come down the sidewalk. I had a woman threaten me last week, every time I tried to step outside, she would rush me, rush out me, wait to come inside and lock the door. She was stripping down, I did call the police, and they did come in, tell her to get dressed, but then she just stayed right there all day. I had to wait, I had to wait until she left. And luckily, she left about four. The next day, someone saw her waving a knife across the street, but I didn't see her doing that. She's, you know, picking at the, crawling around on the sidewalk constantly, screaming, she was throwing stuff at traffic and at passersby's on the sidewalk. So that's part of the thing, I just wanted to address, if there was any recourse, like I just heard tonight about being for the mentally ill. They are so, so out of it, and I'm afraid because of how many people have been stabbed in the back or stabbed in the city in the last couple of years. So, and I'm hoping that we can somehow take them off the streets, or, you know, get some help for them. Yesterday and today, there's a man that was lying in the doorway next to me, next to my door. And he had, yesterday, he had wet his pants and whatever else. And he was just begging people, oh, for a cigarette, even though he had one in his hand. And then today, he was back, and he, and he crossed the street in front of a police car against the light, which the policeman got out and spoke to him, I don't know what he said, but the guy is over there setting up camp right now. So that's, I just wanted to come and touch base.
Can I ask the address again?
It's 204 East Wishka.
Okay, thank you.
So we do have one via Zoom. Elizabeth, if this is a agenda item you're wishing to speak on, we will promote you. If not, we'll call on you again later in the meeting.
Okay, anyone else?
The intention of speaking tonight, but after hearing her, I think this needs to be shared, and I took my daughter to preschool this morning at a local church in our community, and illegally parked, and the parking lot was a vehicle that was, the person was tossed out in the seat with tin foil in his lap. And, and at the time that I arrived, there were two officers there taking care of the situation, which I really appreciated. And the pastor at the church had seen the man in the morning and called and asked for help. And I went shortly after, I took her to school, over to Greater Grades Harbor to get information and try and plan a family vacation for the summer. And on the ramp going up to the door was a person sneaking on the ramp. And this happens there quite frequently, apparently, but they don't call the police because, you know, they're busy and oftentimes, no one comes. I know that they respond when they can. Chief Schumay, I would just like to thank you for your service to our city. I had some contentious conversations with you, and I want you to know it's just because I care about our city and I appreciate what you've done for us. But we have big problems to solve here that have become normalized and commonplace. And we are failing as a city in addressing these issues. Can we leave here tonight? Please go drive by the camp or go in the daylight hours. It's an atrocious mess, there are at least seven, eight stolen grocery carts full of garbage. This isn't safe. We've got to do better. I appreciate the hard work that all of you do, I know that you get calls and complaints and people that are frustrated and can sometimes not be very kind and it's not fair, but I appreciate the time that you spend serving our city and trying to find solutions to these problems. This has been going on way too long, and we have to quit making excuses, and people need to be picked up by Lena Moore, an officer, and taken to where they can get help. So that's my plea for you tonight. I, I can't take my daughter to school and have people feeling unsafe, because there's somebody there with a stolen vehicle that was knocked out from shooting up in their car. And it's sad. This isn't okay, this isn't normal, so we've got to find solutions, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Elizabeth, if your comment is regarding an agenda item on tonight's agenda, you have the floor for three minutes. Go ahead and mute now, if not, you can speak again at the public comment later regarding all topics.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to the Finance Committee. The committee chair report from Councilman Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Committee met tonight, and we have fairly short agenda here. I move that we approve the expenditures.
I second it.
Motion was made, seconded to approve the payroll and expenditures. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, roll call vote, please. I do that every time.
Motion to approve accounts payable in the total amount of $1,382,593, and payroll in the total amount of $840,678.61. Check numbers 25468 through 25470, 77253 through 77430, and wires 1347 through 1348. Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Yes.
Gaken?
Yes.
Catchman?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ferratini?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion approved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
We have a report from Finance and the Community Development Director recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the professional services agreement with AHBL. I move we adopt this report.
I second it.
Motion was made, seconded to adopt this report, is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This contract is to re, to update the goodness. Right, shoreline management plan, which we're required to have. And the last time around, Aberdeen partnered with the cities of Hoquiem and Cosmopolis, and got a grant to pay for this work. We're doing the same thing this year. It's saving the city a lot of money by partnering with the other cities. And so that's a really good deal for us. Hope to have a new plan in place the end of June of next year.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The report is adopted.
And that's it from the Finance Committee, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to Public Works with the report from Committee Chair, Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. That Public Works met yesterday. I'll go straight to reports and communications. We have a report from Public Works and the Parks Director recommending that the city council amend Aberdeen Municipal Code Section 2.60.010 to require park commissioners resolved within the city boundaries of the Aberdeen School District and Section 2.60.040 to prohibit locking, obstructing, or blocking access to city park facilities without city authorization. I move we adopt this report.
Second.
Motion was made, seconded to adopt this report, is there any discussion?
Under, under discussion, I was not at Public Works, and I apologize for not asking this earlier, but is there a reason why we're adopting two ordinances in one shot? I've not seen us do that before. Two separate ordinances in one.
Councilman Shaw? Let me see, I'm trying to see if Hillary is on here. Hillary had written the ordinances and put them together in one. I'm assuming because it would, they were both under Section 2.60.
This is Hillary, that's correct, this is, this is legal, if you choose to adopt both in one go.
We didn't hear you fully there, Hillary.
I'm sorry, yes, I chose to consolidate them because they're both regarding the same chapter, and so it is legal to adopt them in, in one ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, the report is adopted.
Thank you. Under item number two, we have a report from Public Works and the Public Works Director setting the date for a public hearing on June 8, 2022, to consider vacating the right-of-way for the remaining 20-foot wide alley right-of-way specifically between Parcel 010103700600 and Parcel 010103700700, totaling a length of approximately 100 feet or legally described as between the north and south half of the alley in Aberdeen Ben's Platte between lots 5 and 6 and 7, 8 of Block 37, Section 9, Township 1 North, Range 9W, WM, at the request of the Grace Harbor Transit Authority. I move we adopt this report.
Second. Motion was made, seconded to adopt this report, any discussion? Under discussion, Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you. This is the Grace Harbor Transit Facility, and I just wonder if we wouldn't want to, if, if we can ask that we get a public benefit in exchange for the release of this right-of-way in addition to the amount that, that the transit will be paying the city. And what I have in mind is that the city asks for a commitment from the Transit Authority that they will make their restroom, their public restroom available to everybody as part of a requir, the requirement.
This is setting a public hearing, it's not, we're not, we're not arguing the, the, or talking on the argument right now, that's, we're setting a public hearing to talk about it. So that's all this is, is setting a public hearing. I, I say that because we need to talk about it on the record, and that's where we talk about it, at the public hearing on the record.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we'll set a date for the public hearing on June 8th, 2022, to consider vacating this right-of-way.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Ellis. I would appreciate your comments, and we'll talk about that in our next Public Works. I would appreciate your comments and we'll talk about that in our next Public Works committee meeting, what that will look like. Under item number three, we have a report from Public Works and the Public Works Director to set a resolution authorizing sole source procurement of wastewater chopper pumps from Von Company Incorporated of Graves Harbor for a period of six years. I move we adopt this report.
Thank you. Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? See none? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. The report is adopted.
So moving on to resolutions, we have a resolution setting the date for a public hearing on June eighth, twenty twenty-two to consider vacating the proposed right-of-way on the report adopted earlier. I move we bring in a resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made seconded to bring in the resolution regarding the hearing date. Any discussion? See none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
This will be resolution two, zero, two, two, dash, zero, five.
Thank you. Under item number two, we have a resolution authorizing sole source procurement of wastewater chopper pumps from Von Company Incorporated of Graves Harbor for a period of six years. I move we approve the resolution. Second.
Motion was made seconded to approve this resolution. Any discussion? See none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is adopted.
This will be resolution number two, zero, two, two, dash, zero, six.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under ordinances, we have first reading of bill number twenty-two, zero, four and ordinance amending the Aberdeen Municipal Code section two point six, zero point zero, one, zero, changing the residency requirements of park commissioners and amending the Aberdeen Municipal Code section two point six, zero point zero, four, zero to prohibit locking, obstructing, or blocking access to city park facilities without city authorization. I move we approve the first reading.
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made seconded to approve the first reading of this ordinance change. Is there any discussion? Under discussion, council member? Who's got their hand? Oh, Ellis.
Thank you. Yes, I just would like to know if these, if the boundary is extended to the school district boundaries. Or does that mean that people could be on the park board who don't vote within the city of Aberdeen? Or pay taxes to the city of Aberdeen?
That is correct. And we currently on the museum board, uh, there is no residency requirement for museum board members. Uh, I'm not sure about the planning commission or the the other board that Lisa works with. Maybe she could speak on those. So this is not unusual.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. The ord, the first reading is adopted.
Thank you. We have under ordinances, number two, second reading and public hearing of bill number twenty-two, zero, two and ordinance vacating a portion of Pearson Street within block one of the Harbor Heights addition to Aberdeen, section four, township seventeen north, range nine west, W M. I move we open the public hearing.
Was there a second? Thank you. Motion was made seconded to open the public hearing. Any discussion? See none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The public hearing is now open. I think the first thing is everybody knows where this is now because of the description that we read, right?
Well, Mayor, not seeing a stampede to the podium, I move we close the public hearing.
I second it.
Thank you. Motion was made seconded, close the public hearing. Any discussion? See none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. The public hearing is now closed.
Under item number three, we have second reading and public hearing of bill number twenty-two, zero, three and ordinance amending Aberdeen Municipal Code twelve point seven, two point zero, six, zero relating to festival event permits. I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Seconded, okay. Motion was made seconded to open the public hearings. Is there any discussion? See none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is now open on in ordinance amending city, Aberdeen Municipal Code relating to festival event permits.
Can we ask a question?
Sure.
What exactly is this? What's being amended?
What's being amended is a piece of Aberdeen Municipal Code that prohibited asking for charging of, of entry fee or asking for donations on a public site, like if you had a festival going. Most particularly, then we get right to the point. If you had the Glow Festival operating in the alley and you wanted to, the Rain Glow Festival, and you wanted to charge an admission, you couldn't do it by our city ordinance. The reason was because that city ordinance was probably originally written in nineteen twenty and it was, and at that time, there were theaters everywhere. And it makes sense. But it's antiquated. It doesn't make sense. And it's time to get it out of the way.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation. So, for example, if they had Rain Glow, they could ask for donations for people that are coming in to support the event.
Yeah. Or even, or even charge an admission to a piece of their program or something.
Thank you.
Retired council member Tim Allstrom.
Hi, I'm Tim Allstrom. I live in the Central Park area. I, there's been some discussion of this in the past, but the, and, and maybe the councils already discussed this in their first reading or committee, but I'm just kind of curious as to, you know, there's no difference here between a for-profit, somebody doing something or a nonprofit doing something. And I, and I wonder if that's worth considering. Thank you.
I have one on too.
One on there. Just a comment. The, these events are, are on public property and they're permitted. And so this is focused more on community event type things, not Walmart setting up a booth in the alley and selling shirts or something. And I, I don't mean that's, be smarty about that. I'm just saying an example. The, the only, the only situation that's ever arose that we use this type of thing for is community event, festivals, various things like that. So.
I think we're still in public hearing.
Yeah. So is there anybody else? Has a comment?
There was one on Zoom.
Steve Wilson on Zoom.
Okay.
Their hand up.
There's Steve Wilson on the Zoom that has a public comment?
I'm Deb Wilson.
Okay.
I'm not sure that, that I'm in the right timeframe. Are you doing just public comments right now?
Public comments on an amendment to the Aberdeen Municipal Code.
Okay.
Not quite yet, Deb.
All right. I'll hang in there. Thank you.
Lisa Scott, did you have your hand up? I guess not. Okay. I don't see anybody else.
I move we close the public hearing.
I second it.
Motion was made seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? See none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is closed.
Mayor Shay, that's all from Public Works.
Okay, I'd like to amend the motion and suspend the rules and make the second reading the third and place it for a vote, for a final passage to me.
Second.
Motion was made, made seconded to suspend the rules and place, make the second reading the third, place it in final passage. Any discussion? Hearing none? This is a roll call vote, please.
Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Yes.
Gaken?
Yes.
Catchman?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ferretini?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
This will be ordinance number six, six, eight, two.
Okay. Moving on to Public Safety Committee from committee chair, council member Ross.
Thank you, Mayor Shay. Public Safety met this evening at six thirty. And first, the report from the fire department. So the April twenty twenty-two call statistics for the Aberdeen Fire Department were four hundred ninety-nine calls. Seventeen of those were fires. The April twenty twenty-two call statistics to the city of Cosmopolis were thirteen calls. Two of those were fires, which are now billed and paid by the city, billed to the city of Cosmopolis and paid by them to our department. The department has been extremely busy and it just, it seems like every month those numbers keep going up. The Aberdeen Fire Department is doing fire facility tours for city council members. Assistant Chief Dave Golding did send out an email to everyone, so please get back to him if you can attend one of those. If the times and date don't work for you, reach out and they'll set up something different for you. This is an opportunity to tour the current facilities and see the issues that we're looking to improve with new buildings. So. Also, the annual report from the fire department is in our council boxes and in the next few days it will be sent out in a PDF format, but he wanted us to be aware that they were there and that was pretty much put together by Assistant Chief Golding and it does include the last two years. So a lot of information there. From the Aberdeen Police Department, there's one item on the agenda this evening, which we'll get to in a little bit. Congratulations to Officer Brandy Slater, who we saw earlier, receive her life-saving award. The VIPS volunteer hours for the last month included a hundred forty-three and six of the VIPs averaged more than twenty-three hours during the month. We also have a newest, a new member, Kelly Sutera, and she's been very active in training with other VIPs. And there's two additional applicants that are going through the process now to become volunteers. And Chief Schumate mentions every month, what a great help these volunteers are to his department and our city. And today, both Chief Schumate and Chief Myers attended the Aberdeen Rotary Meeting and gave presentation and answered lots of questions. He said that went very well. And again, March and April continue to be very busy months for the Aberdeen Police Department. For the month of March, the police department handled three thousand, one hundred nineteen service requests for a daily average of just over one hundred. For April, the total number of service requests was three thousand, sixty-six with a daily average of one oh two. So both our fire departments and our police departments have been very, very busy. And I'd just like to say thank you for all they do to keep us safe. And I know it's a lot of hard work. And also thank you, Chief Schumate. I'm gonna miss you.
Thank you.
Okay. Onto reports. We have a report from Public Safety and the police chief authorizing the request to order another patrol vehicle recognizing that an additional thirty-three thousand may be needed in supplemental budget if billing occurs in twenty twenty-two. I move we adopt this report.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to mention that Chief Schumate, it takes a long time to get these cars in. And so even though he's putting in the order now, chances are we won't receive them till much later in the year and probably won't end up having to pay for them until twenty twenty-three. But in case it comes due, there may be a supplemental budget. But they put a lot of miles on their cars and it's important to keep rotating in some new ones and getting rid of the older ones. So that's why we're requesting this.
It's hard to imagine. It's hard to keep up with, you're on the outside looking in on how fast them cars get wore out. Seems like we just bought all these new cars and they all have over a hundred thousand miles on them already.
Said they last about five years, four and a half to five years.
It seems like we just did it.
I am wise.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all for Public Safety.
Thank you. We have any special agenda items?
We do have two special agenda items. First is a report from personnel and the Human Resources Director recommending that the city council adopt the salary adjustment recommendations from this Cabot-Dow salary study. I move we adopt this report.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Under discussion?
I'm in full support of this and I want to thank especially HR Director Smith and Finance Director Soul for all of their help answering questions and pulling numbers and everything that they did to, to pull this together. And then everyone's patience as well to give us as a council some opportunity to digest the information.
Thank you. Anyone else? The council member Shaw.
So I'm, I've got a lot of anxiety over this and I'm just gonna share that I'm, I'm not gonna vote in favor of this tonight. I hope everyone had the opportunity to read the additional information because this is a hundred thousand dollar decision this year and a two hundred thousand dollar decision next year. And there were some comments at our last meeting regarding that, you know, our public safety chiefs, but they're under a totally different formula. And even though they're included in this study, their salaries are competitive and they're not part of what, it's a different formula. So they're not impacted by this. I feel a little bit aggrieved because I lobbied for this study. I kind of lobbied against some one-off salary adjustments that came to us last year thinking that if we had an, an objective, bona fide salary study of our non-union positions, it would be more fair. It would be objective, would get the politics taken out of it, right? Well, I was wrong in that regard because now we have two reports and a lot of heightened emotion. And I just want to say that I, I, this is, like I said, it's given me a lot of grief because our employees are our most valuable resource and I wish this process had been more elegant. But both of these reports, if you have the opportunity to read them in their entirety, make it clear that when it comes to total compensation, we are competitive. that when it comes to total compensation, we are competitive, except in a couple of key positions. So, if we want our non-representative staff to be paid more, instead of paying into retirement packages, then let's, you know, kind of have that conversation. But the proposal before us tonight does both. It will increase our total salary costs by what I said earlier, while still maintaining the fringe benefits that put us, you know, kind of, that make us competitive in the first study. So, I just don't think we are underpaying our non-union employees two hundred thousand dollars a year, and I value the work they do for our city, but the facts don't support the proposed raises as presented, and I'm not gonna vote for this tonight. Thank you for listening to me.
Any other discussion?
If I could just respond?
Go ahead.
I also read their reports in entirety, and I agree with much of what you said. However, I, in listening to staff members and understanding some of the challenges we've had, hiring many of our key positions, we've had positions out there for a long time, and a lot of times it, we are competitive, but this is a market right now for people that are looking for jobs, and many people can go out that have the appropriate skill sets and get jobs just about anywhere. So, I think it's important that we pay our staff as competitively as possible and retain our staff that we currently have.
Thank you. Any other discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. The motion passes. Is there any other special agenda items?
Yeah.
Yes. A report from the Parks Director recommending the council approve the city's accession of the items donated from Tom Hill, Pam Aho?
Aho.
Aho? I'll beg your pardon. And Mary Ellen Salmon into the city's museum collection. I move we accept this report.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is made seconded to adopt this report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And that's it.
That is it for special agenda items.
We'll move to public comments. Anything you want to talk about, come up to the podium. You have three minutes. Come up to the podium, please. Could you state your name and where you live?
Yeah, if you excuse me, I'm not in public talking. My name's Mandy Toll. I live in the third ward. I worked in the fifth ward. Okay, I'm not gonna talk about the crime or the homeless issue right tonight. We went over that quite a bit. What I am gonna talk to you is about the garbage, the refuse, human waste. I took pictures. I got them for anyone that wants to see them this evening. It's unacceptable, and I don't know who's responsible for that plot of land. I don't know if it's a DOT, I don't know if it's a city, but the amount of waste there, you were being very kind with seven.
That was just what I could see from across the board.
No, drive around. We have stacked up, we have an impending on our right-of-way to move our trucks. We're a business. I mean, it's getting ridiculous down there. I've complained. I've seen city come in, clean it up. Last two weeks, no one's been there. I complained again. This is getting to be an issue. We have to clean up human waste now. There's no porta potty there now. There's no hand sanitizing. There's nothing to keep these people healthy, and they're pushing their stuff out into the street, out into the sidewalks. That's fine. Okay, give it away from your camp. That's great. But now, it's disgusting. I can't tell you. That's not the way people should live, and that's not the way the businesses down there should have to experience. I'm not gonna approach these people. I don't know these people. I don't know what their issues are, and I feel like everybody should be able to live comfortably, happy, taking the steps to protect ourselves. We've done thousands of dollars, businesses down here, thousands and thousands of dollars in cameras. The DOT has a twenty-four-hour security now for reporting. They can't do anything. They can't report security. It makes me feel better. I have a can of bear mace in my filing cabinet, just in case someone walks in. But again, I'm going outside of that, and outside of what I'm saying right now, is we have to be on a regular schedule to have this garbage, human waste.
Fifteen seconds.
It has to end. It has, I mean, if we're, we've gotta be proactive, not reactive. We need to get in there on a regular basis. I see the, the streets we've been coming down.
Thank you. We were there Monday and today with the crews picking up and cleaning up.
Sir, I took these pictures before I left work.
But the, the DOT property.
In the alley, in the alley.
We've been working with them pretty regularly, trying to, otherwise, the city pays for it all. We've been trying to get them to be responsible for their property.
April, oh, by third ward. And I'm gonna do something that I rarely do. I sympathize with these guys, and I'm an advocate for the homeless. But you know who you guys gotta blame? These guys. County Commissioners Warren and Pine turned down a one point six million dollar grant for a shelter. I don't agree with a lot of the people that have put me down on social media, threatened me, whatever. But I did agree with what Mr. Haywood said yes last week. We're in full circle, full circle, Mr. Mayor, council members. We are right back where we are, where we were three years ago. They're not on the river. They're in front of your guys' gate that you put up three years ago, so they couldn't, anybody could get in there. Garbage? Yeah, there's garbage down there, like the lady said. What are they supposed to do with their garbage? As just a basic human being, where are they supposed to go to the bathroom? Some of them have animals down there. They are flooding down there with the harsh rains that we are getting. I have cats and dogs. The city was very happy, Mr. Mayor, as you sat there in your truck a couple of months ago and watched them destroy pallets. I was able to get some pallets and get them down at the camp, so people wouldn't be sitting in six inches of water in their tents with their animals. So, the, the business owners, yeah, they have a right to be pissed. I'm human. I sympathize with their business. I see them wandering the streets here in Aberdeen, the homeless, because of your ordinances. You kicked them off the river. You kicked them out of Tulsa. You told them that they can go to sleep in alleyways. They're not really doing that. You stuck them under a bridge with their animals, no porta potties. Many of you thought I left. I'm still here. I've had two strokes. My cancer came back. I had COVID. But I'm still here, and I will still, whether you guys hate me or not, I will still stand up for the less fortunate. And I do sympathize with the owners, because you guys have to look at yourselves in the mirror with the deaths that we've had in Aberdeen. The man that died in the fire has family. Can you imagine being burned alive? Burnt alive, people.
Five seconds.
Look yourselves in the mirror.
Anyone else?
Abby Thomas, born, five, was born and five. Okay, I would like to thank the mayor for suggesting that we go back live and everybody show up in person. I think it's overdue. It's been over two years. Everything, everyone's fine. I don't, I don't see anything issues. I think there's council members to come into this ward. There is, it isn't that tight in here. There's plenty of room. I see council members out walking around in public, where, like in markets, where they're close together. And also, there are council members that are going down to the, to, under the, the bridge there and supplying needs and stuff and handling, you know, around all that. There's, there's fresh garbage laying all over down there. So, if, if they can go there, I think they can come to City Hall. They need to make an appearance and answer to their constituents. And it's, it's, we're not asking a lot from them. It's only a couple hours every couple of weeks. And I think it would be respectful to the town and to the people, and also, it would be nice to see government operating again instead of this Zoom, which not everybody can agree with. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, Tim Olstrom from Central Park. I, I just wanted to, like, two different subjects here. A little while back, several weeks, I got a phone call from someone who were checking the city webpage. And, and again, I know this isn't the most important issue in the world, but it was kind of interesting that they see my name listed there on a, on a city committee in the Community Service Building, which no longer exists. But, and, and so, I kind of went to the website and looked at, you know, and that information is really, really dated. So, at some point, may want to update that information if anybody's looking at the city information or the website. The other thing I just wanted to mention, you know, I served as the, as a council rep on the museum board for a while. And at least one or maybe more, didn't live in the city of Aberdeen, but they were really contributing members to that museum board. And, and so, personally, you know, anybody that serves on those boards is appointed by the mayor, and they have to be approved by the council, and if any money gets spent, it has to be approved by the council. So, per, just my own opinion, I, I, you know, I, I don't think it's a bad idea on some of those boards, maybe the Parks Board, that a non-resident of Aberdeen serves on those. Sometimes, it's very difficult to get people to fill those positions. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. Antara Croft from Ward Four, and I just wanted to come up and talk again about this homeless situation. And it's just hitting so many fronts, and just seeing the businesses being destroyed downtown and people leaving because they don't feel safe and because of obstruction of their businesses and trying to get people down there. Just finding them a home is not an answer. There have been studies, just talking to this committee of the homeless. Just finding housing is not the answer, because they're discovering it doesn't work. There's already been a ton of articles, housing first does not work. They have to get off the drugs. And we've really got to work on the drugs coming into Aberdeen. Who's bringing all these drugs in? I'm, I'm glad that Brandy did do the drug bust. That's awesome. We'd like to see a lot more, because, I mean, people have witnessed trucks coming in front of the Calvary Chapel selling drugs. And so, we know they're out there all the time. And then I hear that there's even these mules with backpacks on bikes delivering drugs. So, we have a big drug problem here. And all these Suboxin clinics, and it's because it's expanding. We have to work to get people off of the drugs, because they keep getting on drugs. And all this heroin and fentanyl that's coming across the borders. These kids are being introduced to this. I mean, they're seeing it every day. They're, it's ripe in town. I mean, they're dealing with it. Their friends are getting into it. And we're gonna have a vicious cycle if we don't clean this up. So, we really need to work with the drugs that are coming in. And who are all these people dropping more people off in Aberdeen? I mean, we need to charge these people. If they're bringing them into Aberdeen, if they're known, like, ten thousand dollars for bring, dropping them off. I mean, we can't deal with more and more of this homeless, and they're growing. Who's talking about the numbers? How many have they grown from, what it was like a hundred and fifty, now it's like four fifty? And the crime that comes with it, we're not talking about the crime. We've got to look on the, on the housing and other reports for people trying to move into the area or thinking about moving here. They see the crime, and we're one of the highest crime rates in the, in the state and one of the highest rates in the country even for our population. So, it's not only homeless problems. It's these drugs and the crime that comes with it. They're, and these poor people that are down.
Five seconds.
Down below, they're getting a ton of crimes, and they have people out in the streets drug out, and their kids are... So, I hope we can clean it up somehow.
Thank you.
I have worn out my welcome here on the podium tonight, Mayor, at Ward Four. I just have some hopeful solutions for the problem that we're having with the garbage, specifically back on the twenty-fifth of February, when the camp here at Tassel was being closed and people were being directed over under the bridge. I called the Washington Department of Ecology and the EPA, and Mayor, I can give you their information. But there are grants that they can help assist the city with. And I would, I'll share this with you after council, but the EPA and the Washington Department of Ecology can help us with this problem. And they left a voicemail stating that they have noted my call and that they would reach out to the city. I contacted them back and did get a phone number of someone to call directly, so hopefully, we can apply for these grants, because this is just not an Aberdeen problem. A lot of these people are not even from here. And, but I'll share that information with you. We just really, we have to find solutions, and standing up here and complaining and pointing the finger is not helpful. We've got to get away from that. But anyway, I'll share that with you. I hope we can find more solutions. Personal responsibility is something we all have to take in America. And, you know, if you have room to help these people in your home and are concerned about their well-being, write them in. But there's a reason we can't do that, because we're dealing with illnesses and behaviors that aren't safe. So, my other comment is in relation to council members who are aiding and abetting this problem and providing pallets and other things. That's unacceptable. And back around the twenty-fifth of February, I went down to State Street and went to several businesses, all right in that area that we're surrounding where these people were being told to move to by a council member. And a council member who said, oh, I've gone around and talked to these people, has never stepped foot in two or three of those businesses she claims to have gone and talked to. So, we need to be honest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we switch to Zoom? We have two waiting on Zoom.
Okay, one more thing quickly. I forgot to mention nonprofits. Can we get the nonprofits here and tell, give a report to the council what they are doing to solve this problem? Because aren't they getting millions and millions of dollars to solve this problem? It just looks bigger. So, can we, can the council agree on that? Does anybody have, if somebody motioned that, that you have, bring in the nonprofits, tell us what they're doing and how they're solving it, what their goals are, and what does success look like? Plus, while we're at it, we might as well get all these Suboxin clinics. Why do we have thirteen, fourteen, fifteen? What are they doing to help our, our Aberdeen?
Deb Wilson, you have the floor for three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Deb Wilson. I'm from Leisure Manor Tennis Association. I'm the president here. We've had, been hit with a huge rent increase, starting in June twenty-two, and we're required to pay for garbage service now as well. And I've recently been informed that most of the cities in Grace Harbor County, if not all of them, except for Aberdeen, have an agreement with LeMay to give a discount for senior... for senior citizens for their garbage service. If there's some sort of disagreement between Aberdeen and LeMay, um, it isn't very nice to put it on the backs of the senior citizens here. And I would hope that we could work something out. The rent increase for us is outrageous. It went from 485 to 635 and then adding the garbage on top of that. Talking about the homeless situation, there's going to be a huge increase of senior citizen homeless people because most of us here are on fixed income and cannot afford this new rent increase. Just saving a small, you know, percentage on the garbage would be a huge show of empathy and interest in the citizens, uh, senior citizens of Aberdeen. And it would sure give us a boost of some sort of hope that we might not have to be paying every penny that's been requested of us. I hate to see that many homeless people coming out, but, uh, we're facing depressed senior citizens, uh, suicide, that type of thing here because the rent has increased so much. So if you guys could see it in your heart to work something out with LeMay or figure out a way for us to pay as a group, um, it, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth.
Who's on there?
Oh, Elizabeth, you have the floor for three minutes if you wish to speak. Elizabeth, if you wish to speak, you'll need to unmute now. You have three minutes.
Okay, let's move to the podium.
I just wanted to add about if there was an advocate, because calling the police all the time because they're very busy with other things. But if there's some, some way we could discuss things like this with, uh, someone to let them know what's going on downtown or in any of the areas of Aberdeen. There is a lot, um, a lot of the homeless people, and I've talked to many of them, uh, they want to remain that way. If they were offered a place to stay for free, they wouldn't want it. They want to do their own thing. I've talked to many that said that. Um, the, I was, uh, there's people that go into stores, uh, I, I witnessed at a Goodwill where they grab armloads of stuff and run out and go to sell it among their friends. There, a lot of us know the drug dealer, know who's dealing drugs and we see it every day. We see the people driving up and, and getting their merchandise or they have been dealing in the street, um, in the doorways. So is there a way or someone we can report to, to, uh, let people know what's going on? So a lot of the drug dealers, they have the scanners so they know when people are calling or when there's going to be a, uh, somebody coming to visit. So just an idea.
Good idea. We could maybe put something on the webpage as well. As well. Anything else from, is there anyone else? Anyone waiting online to make a comment on the Zoom? Seeing none? Anyone in the audience have anything else? I see our flower team is here. Wonderful to see you. And I, I I see there's a lot of flowers out been planted already though.
The city was a great partner this year and while we worked with them, Stacy Barnum, you know, set something up with that for city employees. So that was very helpful.
My, my wife just happened to get baskets and flowers for Mother's Day and that fertilizer works fantastic on them.
Thanks to Stacy and the Parks Department. You know, our volunteers will be going out soon, but we're being tired. So it's really nice to have those younger guys helping to plant it.
Great. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Any, any other comments from anybody? Okay. Council comments? Any, any council comments? Uh, Councilmember Morrison?
So I just wanted to say that, you know, we hear all your concerns about the homeless. I sit on the homelessness committee and we've had some very productive meetings so far. I feel like we're going in the right direction. But when I hear things about a council member going down and providing building materials to them, I feel like we are being actively undermined. And I would just offer this from our municipal code, 12.44.010, building materials and street permit required. No person shall leave or place or cause to be left or placed any stones, bricks, timber, lumber, or any other materials for building in or upon any public street of the city without first obtaining permission from the street commissioner, subject to the approval of the city council. Just stop. It's, it's not helpful. It, it's not productive. We're trying to come up with solutions and when you're actively undermining us, we're just taking 10 steps back. Just stop. That's all.
Any other council comments? Councilmember Catherine?
Shall we talk about meetings again?
Want to?
Let's talk about meetings again. So my understanding is that the previous mandate that we were under expires on June 1st. And previous to that being in place, we were all in council chambers and we didn't have Zoom. And now we're a little bit of both, hybrid, and we do have some Zoom options. And my opinion for what it's worth is that council members would attend in person like we previously did. It seems like we know a lot more about COVID now than we did before. And there's lots of precautionary measures that can be taken now than were before. And, um, also if, in the event that somebody was traveling or ill, that they could use Zoom as an option instead. But I would like to see Zoom remain regardless for the public because I think it's a really good option for them to be able to attend.
Okay. Councilmember Lewis?
I, I would just like to say, I would, I like this Zoom component for when I'm out of town. And, um, otherwise I plan to be here, except when I'm sick. Yes, I didn't think you'd appreciate me copping all over you last time.
We don't.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I agree with Katie and Debbie. I think Zoom is a good avenue. And when someone's ill, they, if they still want to participate, that's great. Sometimes you're, it's not even that you're ill, it's that you don't want to be exposed to maybe someone else. Your immune system might be low. And when I go on vacation, I would like to be able to still attend. I, I just think it's great.
Okay. Councilmember Francie?
Yeah, uh, I have a slight cough right now, so I am not in council chambers. It's a lot safer for me not to spread around my, whatever's going on. I would like to see that we continue doing, uh, hybrid Zoom as well as in person. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Councilmember Ellis?
Thank you. And if I was to be there in person, I would need to wear my, um, my mask. And I think at least via Zoom, people get to see my face and my face, facial expressions. And wearing a mask in a closed room for all this time is, um, not, not an easy thing to do. So it's helpful for me to remote in. Um, I do hope to be able to, um, attend in person soon, but, um, uh, I, I still have concerns about my health and the health of my family members, um, if I'm there at this time.
Okay. Go ahead.
I think that, in, in, in my own opinion, I mean, we all go out in the public and we all go out and we do things, we have things we do every single day. And we're not overwhelmingly worried about COVID until it comes to council meetings. Then we're worried about it. Then we can't attend. Then we can't do this or that. But it, it, it really appears to me that it's like avoiding it. Avoiding being here, sitting in front of your constituents, looking at them and, and seeing and hearing their expressions and seeing how they're reacting to us and how we react to them. But we can actually go out every single day, go shopping, go getting gas in our car, going places. Why can't we be here? We make a lot of excuses why we can't. But I mean, we're here to serve our community. We're here to serve our constituents. And I don't feel we're doing them full justice by sitting at home in our lounge chairs. But that's just my opinion.
Anyone else? Okay. Any other comments?
Do we have to take a vote or is it
There wasn't a motion.
Just what the city's going to do is what's going to happen?
There, there hasn't been a motion. It's just a discussion. What's that?
You were just notifying of the plans of, of, of
Do we need a motion to do what we were doing before COVID?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion if we can.
I would second that motion.
What is your motion?
That we attend in public.
Well, uh, okay, it, it's my feeling that if somebody has a health issue though, that's different. Right? Don't you think? Councilmembers?
What about your city staff? What's their options with health issues?
Well, it's the same.
To work remotely?
Well, if they're, no, I, we're going to do away with remote work unless you're, you know, actually sick or something, but there's not going to be a
And I would think that the councils should do the same thing that we expect of our staff.
Okay.
This is Stacy. I hate to jump in on the council comment, but I could suggest you guys have one more meeting, uh, before the June 1st deadline now that you've started the discussion. If council members need more information, staff, could that, provide that to you? And then you could bring it to a vote if that's the, the way you want to do it at the next meeting. Cause you do have a little more time. Just wanted to throw that option out there.
Stacy's been overseeing our COVID regulations. And, and one, one of the things that I've always maintained in relation to what we're talking about is with, with staff, I've, I've never required staff to be here unless they have something on the agenda. Or if you're
Security.
Security. And you guys got to be here. So, uh, what, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion. Do you want to do it?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion was made and seconded. He, he described the motion.
So it's a motion?
So for full and council meetings only?
Yeah.
Is the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless, of course, you're, you're sick.
Yeah.
Or, you know.
Or out of
Then we miss the meeting. If we're sick, we miss the meeting. If we're out of town, we miss the meeting. That's what you're saying.
No.
No.
I'm saying if you're sick or you're out of town, of course, use remote, you know.
So you're, you're willing
I'm saying if you're able to be here, be here.
So you're willing to keep the remote option.
Yeah.
So can you restate the motion, please?
Yes, please.
So the motion is that council members will return to council chambers in person for meetings with the exception of if they are ill or out of the area.
And then you're, you're required to call somebody here, the council president or somebody and, uh, explain why you're not here. That's what we've always had to do.
So is there a change?
No, that's what we've always had to do as far as if you couldn't be at the council meeting and participate, you were supposed to call in and let somebody know.
But like Joshua is, he's still in ill, so he could have called in and then he'd still be able to attend the Zoom, correct?
He could, yeah.
Okay.
That's how we've always done it.
So we'd still have the Zoom. So is there anything to change?
To restate, maybe we're still going to maintain the hybrid meeting format, but there is, um, a first expectation that you would attend unless you can't.
Yes.
Including the committee meetings.
And the past in-person attendance has been optional.
As, um, as far as I understand, the Public Works Committee has, uh, discussed this and we agreed to continue on Zoom meetings. We might re-discuss that.
Could we leave that up to the committees as a whole to decide whether or not they decide that from a committee to committee?
I'm good with that. Is there any further discussion? There's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
No.
Motion carries, the ayes have it. Any other, uh, council comments, discussion?
I have a question, um, about that second reading with the public bill number 20 dash or 22-02. Uh, I wasn't familiar with, with skipping the process like Debbie Ann did for the festival thing. Would we be able to do that with this as well? Are we, are we going to open public hearing again? Cause I, I'm familiar with the property, it's all in the up and up. And if we could get it off the agenda and just, and do, I think it'd be a good idea to clear the agenda.
Uh, the, I think the other item was a, uh,
They're, they're both the second reading. So it's like, are we able to skip the third or skip the rules? Just, uh, put that to, it's, it's, it's a piece for everybody.
At the time of the motion. Yes.
One less thing on the agenda.
Second reading relating to festival events.
And then the one right, right above it was the, uh, or below it.
Pearson Street Vacation.
Yeah. And it's the second reading.
That could have been done at the
Yeah, at the time. But, but would we be able to retract now and do that now just, just to clear it off or just would have to deal with it again next, next meeting?
Roberts rules of order. Where are you?
It's council comments, so they can make a motion.
Yeah. Council's always been Council's always been allowed to make a motion during this period.
I would like to make a motion and then we move to the
It's, it's probably in Debbie's desk.
It probably is. Marco left everything for me.
Just the, the final passage and I might even
We've already passed the second reading, so there would be a motion for the third reading and final passage.
It makes sense to me to, to remove it, to get that cleared off the agenda because it is, it's, it's something we could just go through now.
Here it is.
I'm familiar with the property. Quite seen it from the house. If the land, if the little landlady's property, it, it just makes sense where to go.
I think you can just make a motion to accept the second reading as the third.
Suspend the rules and, I mean, it's the bottom portion has it all written now.
Read it off and if we're wrong, we'll correct it next week, two weeks from now.
I move to open, no.
No, it's the bottom portion.
I move to suspend the rules and consider the second reading, the third, and read by title only and place in the final passage. and read by title only and place in the final passage.
Please, bill number?
Bill number 22-02. On the ordinance, beginning in Portion of Percy Street within block one of Harbor Heights, addition to Aberdeen, section four, township 17 North, range nine West.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded to suspend rules and make the second reading, the third on bill 22-02. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Ellis?
Could you clarify which site this is?
There was a map in the original packet, but it's, there's a piece of property that's owned by a homeowner and they own the property behind it on a tree farm. And there's a small section of property that separates the two that they use as a path to get between the two of them. And they just want to own the whole section.
Right, okay.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
It does have to be real call.
Oh, it's a third reading, yeah. So it does have to be real call. I know.
This is third reading on bill 22-02. Spending the rules, accepting the second reading as the third and placing in final passage. Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Yes.
Gaken?
Yes.
Catchman?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Pericini?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes, Mr. Mayor, this will be ordinate 6683.
Thank you. Okay, anything else for council discussion? Seeing none?
I move, we adjourn.
Motion was made, seconded to adjourn. If there's no objection, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone.